All right, well, let's get started, everybody. I'd like to welcome you all. My name is Andrew Stolfi. I'm on behalf of the Department of Consumer and Business Services. I'd like to welcome you to our second annual hearing on prescription drug prices. My name is Andrew Stolfi. I'm the Director of the Department of Consumer and Business Services and the State Insurance Commissioner. I use he/him/his pronouns. The Department of Consumers and Business Services is Oregon's largest consumer protection agency. Within it is a Division of Financial Regulation, which protects consumers and regulates insurance, depository institutions, trust companies, securities, and consumer financial products and services. The hearing today will summarize the findings of the Oregon Prescription Drug Price Transparency Program within the Division of Financial Regulation over its first two years of operation. This program, which collects information on drug prices from drug manufacturers, health insurance companies, and insurers, was created by the 2018 Prescription Drug Price Transparency Act. High and rising prescription drug prices are a major concern at both a national and state level. The COVID-19 pandemic has given renewed urgency to this topic as pharmaceutical companies have raced to develop therapies and vaccines for novel coronavirus with unprecedented speed. The data collected by this program will expand our understanding of the complex pharmaceutical supply chain so we can create more effective policy tools to better protect consumers. Before this hearing, we asked Oregonians to send us questions and stories about prescription drug pricing. We heard from many consumers, including a long-term care provider who relayed her experiences with patients, saying, "I have seen and heard folks saying, 'Oh, my gosh, I have not enough money to get my needed medication' for whatever their health problem is. They say, 'I will not be able to eat well again, and what money is left for electric and housing will barely make ends meet. I do not qualify for outside help due to my retirement amount, just barely over what is allowed for income and health. Can you please take me to food banks so I can get something to help with my food need? I cannot have my heat on very much as the cost of meds does not allow for that.'" We also received questions such as, "Some drug ads run multiple times in a half-hour program, especially during prime time, particularly on news and other programs watched mostly by seniors. How much does this advertising add to the cost of the drugs? Also, how much do the drug companies pay to or for doctors to endorse and prescribe these drugs?" The department continues to work through the huge amount of data we have collected in an effort to answer questions like these and advise the legislature on how drug pricing could be addressed. Today's public hearing will be moderated by the panel seated at a virtual dais, and I'll serve as the presiding officer for this public hearing. I'm glad to be joined today by Senator Lee Byer, Representative Rob Nose, and Jeremy Van De Hey, Director of Health Policy and Analytics at the Oregon Health Authority. We're very glad to have Senator Byer and Representative Nose join us today. I can note that scheduling conflicts due to the ongoing December legislative days have unfortunately prevented a few other legislators from joining us as well. So we're going to begin the hearing with a brief overview of our program and the analysis from the first two years of data collected. Following this, we have several invited panels who will present on topics including the price of COVID-19 therapeutics, the policy options other states are implementing or considering to control drug prices, and the potential for federal actions from the incoming Congress administration on drug pricing. Finally, we are accepting public testimony and comments on prescription drug prices. We encourage members of the public to sign up in the Zoom chat box to testify today by typing your name and indicating your desire to speak. There will be two opportunities for comment, one in the middle of the hearing after the department's presentation, and the second one at the end of the program. We encourage you to state your preference, if any, as to which time spot you might prefer. That said, we do have a limited time, and we'll do our best to get to as many people as possible. In the interest of hearing from everyone that wants to talk, we may have to limit testimony when we get there. Everyone who signs up to provide testimony is also encouraged to submit their remarks in writing to the department at rxprices@oregon.gov. That's rxprices@oregon.gov. And this public hearing will follow usual public meeting laws and regulations. Finally, to mention that the Pharmaceutical Research and Manufacturers of America, PHRMA, has filed a complaint in federal court seeking to invalidate the laws that authorize this program. This litigation is ongoing. We have submitted all briefs for a motion for partial summary judgment related to one law, House Bill 4005, and await the court's decision. The portion of the case related to our second law, House Bill 2658, has been stayed pending a decision from a similar case in California, which is still ongoing but has yet to receive a hearing. We cannot comment on the ongoing lawsuit, but remain disappointed that PHRMA decided to challenge these laws designed to provide transparency and to help Oregonians better understand why drug prices are rising. With that, I'm glad to give my co-moderators a moment to briefly introduce themselves before we dive in the agenda. If you can go, Senator Byer, the Representative Nose, and then Jeremy.
Good morning. I'm Lee Byer. I'm a state senator from Senate District 6, which is Central, Lane, and Lane Counties, and have been interested in this subject matter and doing everything we can to reduce costs for a long time. Enjoy being here and look forward to the testimony.
Good morning, everyone. My name is Rob Nose. I represent in the state legislature, House District 42, which is inner southeast and a little sliver of northeast Portland. And it was my pleasure and honor to carry the bill on the short 2018 session that ultimately led to this program. And I'm delighted with the work that the Department of Consumer and Business Services is doing to implement it. And I look forward to today's presentation and the comments from the public.
Good morning, everybody. Jeremy Van De Hey, I'm the Director of the Health Policy and Analytics Division for the Oregon Health Authority. And it's a delight to be here and appreciate the invite and opportunity to participate. I think, as folks know, and thanks to the leadership of some leaders like Representative Nose and Senator Byer, we've been on a mission for several decades to not just expand coverage in the state, but to make sure it's affordable. And I think we've all seen the challenges that prescription drugs have played in terms of costs on the system, as well as challenges to access for individuals in the state that are struggling. And I think today's hearing is really important and really look forward to the dialogue.
Thank you all so much. So we've got a lot of information to get through, so let's dive into that. Please don't forget to sign up if you'd like to speak at either of the slots during the hearing today. So we're going to start with a presentation from the department on the information we've gathered. I turn things over to Numi Lee Griffith, who's the Program Coordinator of our Drug Price Transparency Program, while Antonio Vargas, who's a research analyst for the program. Numi, over to you.
Good morning, everyone. Welcome and thank you all for joining us virtually today for our second annual public hearing on drug prices. My name is, as the director mentioned, Numi Lee Griffith. I use she/her pronouns, and I am the Program Coordinator for the Drug Price Transparency Program. We're going to start off today with a brief presentation, giving an overview of the program and our findings from our first two years of data collection. You'll be able to find some more detailed analysis on our second annual report to the legislature, which was finalized yesterday, and we're in the process of putting that out for release, as well as looking through the meeting materials for today, which includes a number of things that were submitted by our invited panelists. I am going to allow some time for questions at the end of our presentation. I've got a moderate-length slide deck, but I'd invite the moderators to go ahead and then jump in at any time to ask questions since I recognize this can be pretty dense material. And I want to make sure that we are explaining things as clearly as possible. So can we bring up the slide deck? So. Thank you. I'll go ahead and get started. So if we can move to the next slide, go over briefly the statutory authority for our program. The first law that created the program, Oregon Drug Price Transparency Act 2018, House Bill 4005, was passed in 2018. We began implementation of the law in 2019, and we've been collecting information on drug pricing from manufacturers, insurers, and individual Oregonians for nearly two years. In 2019, the legislature expanded the reporting requirements for drug manufacturers with the passage of House Bill 2658, which requires advanced notice of planned price increases, including price increases that don't ultimately go into effect. Next slide, please. Broadly speaking, the program has two goals. The first is price transparency. By collecting specific high-cost and price-related information, we can better understand the factors that are contributing to the high cost of prescription drugs and provide accountability for the prices set by pharmaceutical manufacturers, both with the introduction of new high-cost drugs, as well as in terms of addressing price increases as they happen for existing on-market drugs. The second major goal is to provide policy guidance to the legislature. Legislators at the passage of the Drug Price Transparency Act called it a first step towards controlling drug prices. So broadly speaking, our goal is to improve the state's understanding of the pharmaceutical supply chain so we can recommend better policy tools to control the cost of prescription drugs in the future. Next slide, please. So broadly, the program collects information from three major groups, three different sources. Drug manufacturers, who submit reports under two different, under three different circumstances. First is for new specialty drugs, within 30 days of launching a drug with a price of $670 or more for a 30-day or less course of treatment. And that's tied to the price threshold for the specialty tier in Medicare Part D. Manufacturers are required to submit information related to their marketing plans, pricing methodology, and the estimated patient population for that drug. The second is annual price increases. By March 15th of each year, manufacturers are required to submit a report for any drug with a cost of $100 or more for a course of treatment if the price has increased over 10% in the preceding calendar year. The data elements for price increase reports include the profits and revenues, cost of manufacturing and marketing, and the price of the drug in other countries. The third requirement on manufacturers is the 60-day advanced notice requirement created by 2019, House Bill 2658, which requires manufacturers to submit a notice to us 60 days in advance of a plan of price increase. The next category is health insurance companies. This applies to the health insurance companies that participate in the annual rate review proceeding. They are required to submit three different lists to us. The top 25 most prescribed drugs, the top 25 most costly drugs in the preceding calendar year, and the 25 drugs that most contributed to planned spending in the preceding calendar year. This year, we also began to collect certain qualitative information as part of this requirement to do, in order to strengthen our analysis of this information. And finally, the last category is information from everyday Oregonians. Consumers may report price increases they experienced at the pharmacy counter, and we also encourage consumers to share their stories and questions about drug pricing in advance of our annual hearing and the release of our report. Cassie, if you could advance to implementation challenges? Thanks. So we've faced certainly faced some challenges. This is a very complex program that we've set up very quickly. We've worked hard to implement all of the program elements required by our enabling legislation, but there have been some challenges. Since the first is IT development. Since the program collects a lot of sensitive information from our reporting companies, we've had to take fairly significant steps to protect information that is claimed as confidential. We're working currently on building a price transparency website, which is expected to launch in early 2021, which will largely automate the process of releasing data, enable us to release data more frequently, while still keeping important safeguards for sensitive information in place. The second major issue we faced is the quality of data that we receive from manufacturers. The information we receive has been of extremely variable quality, making comprehensive analysis difficult, if not impossible. However, we are actively working with manufacturers to improve data quality, and we should expect to have more complete information in 2021 and beyond. Next slide, please. All of the data that we're presenting today should be considered preliminary, and there's a few reasons for this. First is that we have ongoing work related to compliance. Not every report we receive is complete. Not every manufacturer that should have reported has reported, and we're currently actively working on outreach and enforcement to ensure our data set is as complete as possible. In terms of follow-up inquiries, as part of our process, we often have to ask for additional information or clarifications, questions, following the filing of a report. This process can take as much as 90 days or more of back-and-forth communications with the manufacturer before we consider a filing to be complete. And the final issue is trade secret analysis. Manufacturers are allowed to flag any of the data elements that they submit as trade secret. It takes us time to review the sufficiency of their trade secret claims so we can determine which pieces of data that we're going to release. Next slide, please. A couple more things that I want to note. Much of our analysis is done at the product family level, so drug product families. And the reason that I mention this is that manufacturers often track data for a drug across multiple dosages and package quantities. Where this occurs, we usually analyze the submissions at the product family level rather than the individual drug level, since that's how the information is received. Finally, I'll note that any information that is directly identifiable to a particular drug or company was not claimed as trade secret in the manufacturer's submission. And beyond that, for our analysis, we've de-identified and aggregated any information we've reported to ensure that no confidential information is released. Next slide, please. So diving into the data. The first major category of information we collect is reports related to new high-cost drugs. The program receives new drug reports throughout the year. It's been a fairly steady pace. And as a reminder, this applies to drugs that have a cost of $670 or more for a course of treatment lasting 30 days or less. Most of the new drugs that we receive reports for are generics with a rough ratio of 60:40, generics to brands, and that has held in both 2019 and 2020. In 2020, we received 310 new drug reports, which is an increase of 15% as compared to 2019. Next slide, please. We've analyzed the, we've used public list price information to try and identify public non-reporting. We subscribe to an online database called Metaspan to collect public information on list prices for drugs. And we've done an algorithmic analysis of that to try and identify drugs which have been introduced to market where we should have received a report, but we haven't. From that review, we estimate that of the 310 reports we received, there were approximately 445 that should have been filed, which gives us an estimated rate of compliance with filing of about 70% for new drugs. Next slide, please. I wanted to call out several notable reports that we received in 2020, just briefly before I get into the sort of broader analysis of the data. We have received a report for Gilead Sciences VetClery, which is commonly known by its generic designation Remdesivir. And Remdesivir is the first FDA-approved therapy for COVID-19. One of our invited panels today is discussing the pricing of Remdesivir, and there's some additional detail about Remdesivir in discussion in our annual report, which, as I mentioned, is in the process of being released today. The second drug I'll mention is the highest-priced drug we received a report for this year, which was Dakartos at a WAC price, at a list price of $373,000 per dose. Cancer drugs, which this is, are typically very expensive, and that is especially true for new drugs which are based on relatively recently-developed biotechnology, such as monoclonal antibodies and CAR-T, which is a genetic therapy which requires customization for each patient since it actually uses samples of the specific patient's cells. Dakartos is a CAR-T therapy for cancer, so there's multiple factors which are kind of contributing to it being an especially high-priced drug. The last drug I'll mention is actually a generic pyrimethamine, which launched with a WAC price of $29,250 for a bottle of 100 pills. That's about $300 per pill. The reason that I'm calling this out is because this is the generic version of Deracrim, which is a drug that gained notoriety in 2015 after its production was acquired by Martin Shkreli's Turing Pharmaceuticals, who then raised the price by about 5,000%. 2020 is the first year that we've started to have generic versions of Deracrim come onto the market. And the price of this version of pyrimethamine is significantly lower than the Turing Pharmaceuticals' version was. However, I should note that it's still about 2,000% higher than the original price of the drug before, prior to when it was acquired by Turing Pharmaceuticals. So the reason I bring this up is that there's a common factor between pyrimethamine and Dakartos, which is the effect of established prices on the price of new competitors. Cancer therapies on the market are very expensive, so new cancer therapies tend to be even more expensive relative to treatments for other diseases. And that's especially true for novel therapies like monoclonal antibodies and CAR-T. Pyrimethamine is similarly expensive because of additional market effect, which is, in this case, a continued result of the actions of Martin Shkreli back in 2015. So this is kind of some of the first signs we're getting as to why certain drugs are more expensive than others. Next slide, please. So what this is, is an example of the sort of information that we receive. I'm not going to go over this slide in detail, so you can relax on that. I just wanted to kind of show you so you can have some perspective on what is the source for the analysis we get. The slides will be available on the webpage for the hearing, so you can review them at your leisure. Next slide, please. We've analyzed the marketing submissions we received, looking for sort of common themes and what was mentioned by different manufacturers. And we've done analysis of the frequency of mention for different things. This is based on a review of data which was submitted for 35 brand-name product families. And this applies to brand names, not generics, since generics typically do not engage in any marketing beyond listing with wholesalers. A couple of notes I'll put forward. Many of the submissions we received did not contain enough detail to include an analysis. The most frequently referenced method of drug marketing to healthcare professionals was sales representatives, followed by peer-to-peer communication, such as sponsored speakers. Whereas the most frequently referenced methods of marketing to consumers were print materials and consumer-targeted websites. The other thing I want to note about the marketing information we received is that of manufacturers who submitted reports in 2020, none of them reported the use of TV or radio advertisements for the new drugs, although several expressly stated that they did not plan to use TV ads. The data analysis that we're providing here is limited due to the inconsistency of the data submitted. A lot of what we got was not sufficiently detailed to provide any meaningful analysis. So as I said before, we're continuing to work with manufacturers to improve the quality of data we're collecting. Next slide, please. This is going to be an example of pricing methodology. Again, I'm not going to go over this in detail. This is just trying to give you some perspective on the sort of information that is being reported to us. Next slide. So this is the second narrative element that we collect, which is pricing methodology. This, we analyzed the frequency of themes that were referenced in pricing methodology submissions. Analysis was conducted for submissions representing 43 brand-name product families. And what we found here is the most frequently referenced pricing factors for the drug families were clinical value, pricing from competitors, as I talked about with Dakartos and pyrimethamine, and patient access. Less than 10% of the submissions we received mentioned profit targets in their response. Other factors which were mentioned by a small number of manufacturers included the cost of rebates and other price concessions, formulary placement, and the small patient population for a particular product. Next slide, please. The other major category of information that we collect from drug manufacturers is price increases, which again applies to drugs with course-of-treatment cost of at least $100, which experienced a price increase of 10% or more. In 2019, we received 551 price increases, 93% of which were for brand-name drugs. In 2020, we only received 160, with a majority, 66%, filed for generic drugs. At this point, it's not really clear what's driving this trend. One explanation may be that price increases are happening less, but another possibility is that manufacturers are actively keeping price increases below the 10% threshold that triggers our reporting requirement and/or spreading price increases more widely throughout their drug portfolio in order to still increase prices throughout their product families without actually triggering any reporting requirements. Next slide, please. We don't believe this is related to a lack of compliance. We did a similar analysis to new drugs to identify potential non-reporting. And based on this analysis, we estimate we received 160 reports out of about 191 required in 2020, which is an approximate compliance rate of 84%. Next slide, please. The major element that we receive in price increase reports is a narrative explanation of why the price was increased. Here is an example. Again, I'm not going to go over this in detail, but you can review it at your leisure after the show. Next slide, please. We did do a similar analysis of themes which appeared in this information. This slide is for brand-name drugs. A broad breakdown, the most frequently cited price increase factor for brand names was increased manufacturing costs, followed by R&amp;D costs, which sometimes applies to new indications of the same drug, but often also to support research into other compounds. The other thing I'll note here is that 43%, which is the third-highest of brand-name drugs, cited maintaining patient access as a factor considered in making their price increase decision. Next slide, please. This is the same analysis as applied to generic submissions. As you can see, most of the price increases which were referenced by generic manufacturers were related to increased cost of production, including material labor and regulatory compliance costs. Now I'm going to turn things over to Antonio Vargas, our research analyst, to talk about some of our qualitative analysis for 2020 and the data that we've collected from insurers and consumers in 2020.
Thanks, Numi. Good morning. My name is Antonio Vargas. I use he/him/his pronouns, and I'm a research analyst with the Oregon Drug Price Transparency Program. I'm going to walk through some of the analyses that are included in the annual report, though I'd encourage you to review the full report, which explores other areas as well. So manufacturers are required to report their total revenues and profits for the previous year for any drug that required a price increase report. We analyzed this at the product family level, since that's how we received the data. And for this year, we analyzed the profits and revenues of 62 drugs comprised of 121 NDCs to estimate the profitability of these drugs. So this is a picture of how those drugs' profits compare to each other. Of these 62 drugs, 25% reported a net loss. Half of the reported drugs reported a profit margin of 37% or more. And then six drugs reported a profit margin above 80%. And next slide, please. Next, I'm going to talk about the information we collect from Oregon's health insurers. Health insurers are required to submit top 25 lists for the most costly drugs, the most prescribed drugs, and the drugs that contributed the most to increases in planned spending during the previous year. We also talked to manufacturers, sorry, we also asked manufacturers to submit total prescription. These are insurers. We also asked insurers to submit total prescription and claim amounts for each drug. Since our data is collected as part of the annual rate review process, this is based on information filed by 10 insurance companies that sell plans on the individual and small-group markets. So this list shows the 10 drugs that cost Oregon insurers the most on a per-prescription basis. For the second year in a row, a cancer drug was the most expensive for Oregon insurers. And this year, it was Yervoy, a monoclonal antibody, at $43,500 per patient, with $2.4 million in claims paid for 56 prescriptions. Other diseases appearing on this list include multiple sclerosis, cystic fibrosis, and hepatitis C. Next slide, please. We performed a similar analysis for the most expensive generic drugs. As with brand names, this list includes drugs for multiple sclerosis and cancer. The most expensive generic reported was Glutiramur, a treatment for multiple sclerosis, at $2,800 per prescription. This was calculated based on $36 million in claims across 901 prescriptions. By contrast, the brand name MS drug, Ocurvis, was the second-most expensive prescription in Oregon last year at $39,000 per prescription, at $8.8 million in claims across only 222 prescriptions. While ICER, the Institute for Clinical and Economic Review, has analyzed appropriate pricing for MS treatments and found a clinical benefit for Ocurvis compared to Glutiramur, this still represents a price difference of 1,415%. Next slide, please. This list shows the 10 drugs that were most costly overall for Oregon insurers and was calculated using the total spending reported in the submitted lists. Insurers provide this information to us net of rebates and other price concessions to the extent that that information is available. For the second year in a row, Humira topped this list with a total of $80 million spent in claims across around 17,000 prescriptions. Humira belongs to the same therapeutic class as several other drugs that appear on the list for the treatment of autoimmune disorders, including... for the treatment of autoimmune disorders, including rheumatoid arthritis, plaque psoriasis, and Crohn's disease, Embrel, Stellara, and Remicade. Together, these drugs cost Oregon insurers around a hundred and fifty million dollars in claims. Next slide, please. Here's our list of the five most costly generic drugs across reporting insurers. None of these drugs belong to the same therapeutic classes that appeared on the list of most expensive drugs overall. Two of five drugs on this list are treatments for ADHD. Two are used to treat hormonal conditions, and one buprenorphine is a treatment for opioid dependency. Next slide, please. The last major category of information we collect is reports from Oregon and consumers. Consumers may report price increases they experience when purchasing prescription drugs to the program. Oregon Oregonians are encouraged to report to the program through rack cards that are displayed at many pharmacies in the program presentation throughout the year and on the department's website. Since the start of the program in 2019, consumers have submitted thirty one price increase notifications for thirty one different NDCs. The most reported therapeutic classes by consumers were anti diabetic drugs, including insulins. We had five reports for that. Prostate drugs, we had three reports, and thyroid agents, another three reports. Next slide, please. Over one third of reporting consumers did not know the reason for the price increase that they reported to us. Seventeen, fifty five percent of the reports, seventeen reports indicated that the increase was insurance related, i.e. due to a change in plan, a change in benefits under their existing plan, something like that. With that, that's the end of my part. I'll turn things back over to Numi to talk about the program's policy recommendations for 2021.
Thanks, Antonio. If we could move to the next slide. As I mentioned, of course, the ultimate goal of the program is to provide policy recommendations to, for potential improvements to reduce the burden of high prescription drug costs. We do have an LC which has been drafted for the 2021 legislative session. And we've been actively working with stakeholders, including manufacturers, to get feedback on the proposals that we're putting forward. There's four major components to the existing LC. Protecting consumer information, which we do collect information to consumers, and we want to make sure we're protecting any identifiable information collected by the program. The second is data access. We want to make sure the program has direct access to the all payer, all claims database, which is something that we've used to supplement our analysis in the past and could significantly streamline our operations to add direct access for DCBS to APAC to streamline our operations. Insurance reporting. As Antonio mentioned, currently, the insurance top twenty five list requirement only applies to health benefit carriers, which are on the small group and individual markets, which leaves us covering slightly less than half of the insurance market overall. So we'd like to expand the requirement out to all insurers, so we can have a much more comprehensive dataset. And then the final item is related to patient assistance programs. Currently, we require reporting about patient assistance programs for price increases, but we do not for new drugs. And we believe that that would be a valuable piece of data that we could also collect in relation to new drug reports. As we continue to collect data, we're going to keep on working on expanding the state's understanding of how drugs are priced. And we will develop recommendations on more comprehensive policy concepts of the state they wish to consider in the future. Next slide. And that concludes our presentation for today. I'd encourage you all to review our annual report, which should be going live today and goes into a lot more detail on all of the subjects and a few other things that we covered in the presentation. Thanks all for your time and attention. Thanks for coming to our second annual hearing. And I'd be happy to take questions before we get into the invited panelists.
Thank you, Numi. Thank you, Antonio. A lot of great information there. As Numi mentioned, our report has all of that plus more, so really encourage folks to check out that report. The slides will also be available after the presentation for folks to see. I'll start. We were a little behind schedule, but we'll see if the, any of the, my co moderators have any questions for Numi or Antonio.
No question, but it's, it was really interesting to see how the, the potential of a price cap triggering disclosure maybe is inadvertently causing the price to actually stay below or not increase as much. We'll see if that continues through the years.
I agree with that. Good report. The whole, one of the things we hoped by making more transparency was it would have a downward pressure pricing. It seems to be some evidence of that, the difference between nineteen and twenty. And it'll be interesting to see how it goes forward in the future. Thank you.
Yes, Jeremy, great, great, great report. And, and just echo, or persona, Senator Byer, I think it's important to keep an eye on how much transparency is really having an impact on downward pressure. Not just related to this program, but other efforts we've had as a state to try to use transparency as a tool to, to try to contain healthcare costs. So great, great work and great report.
Thank you all. And I'll ask, there was a question that did come in the chat. Numi, I'll ask you if you can quickly answer this. It was from Jerry Cohen. We're seeing growth of generic biodegs and how do prices versus actual costs compare?
So in terms of looking at generic biological drugs, which are generally called biosimilars, we haven't started really doing a detailed analysis, breaking down biologic drugs versus comparing to brand name biologics or really comparing the sort of small molecule conventional drugs versus biologics in a comprehensive way, other than to note that most of the very expensive drugs on a per patient basis are biologics in general. So, and as to what you were asking about prices versus actual costs, I think I'd point you back to the sort of revenue and profit slide that we had as part of our presentation. There's a more detailed breakdown in our report as well, at which, if you recall, most of the drugs we analyzed had a profit margin of around thirty percent, thirty seven percent, with a significant portion having a profit margin above eighty percent for those drugs. So I think that kind of gets at what you're going, sorry, sorry if that's not complete. It's, we collect a lot of information. It's very complex. It's not always as comprehensive as we might like, but it's, we're working through it and we'll hopefully be able to answer, answer more questions like those soon.
Great. Thank you, Numi. And thank you again, Numi and Antonio, for providing all that great information. So we're going to move now to our public comment period. This is the first of our two. We have two people signed up to speak, Jerry Cohen and Charlie Fisher. We'll go Jerry and then Charlie, and we are a bit behind schedule. So if you could keep to maybe three or four minutes each, that would be very much appreciated. So Jerry, we'll start with you. Cassie, I'll have to add you here.
I just got the unmute button, so thank you. And I will indeed be brief. I'm delighted to be able to both hear and see you, Director Stolfi and Vandehay, as well as Senators Byer and Nos. My name is Jerry Cohen. I've already submitted written testimony, so I'll be brief. It addresses a position of AARP Oregon, nonprofit member association. It represents over a hundred and fifty thousand members, primarily age fifty plus. You can be a member at any age. And I happen to be an AARP volunteer now, as well as a member of the DCBS Division of Finance, Financial Regulations Insurance Advisory Committee. Suffice to say, the, the issue of affordability and accessibility of medically necessary prescription medications has continued to be a major challenge, not just in Oregon, but across the country for decades upon decades. And Congress has failed to assert the leadership it needs. States like Oregon that have been innovative for many, many decades need to step up. And we are proud as AARP to have been taking an active role on that in past efforts. Certainly, there's a lot of great work that has been done and was presented. And our basic concern from that information is clearly that pharmaceuticals are unfortunately still charging too much for often necessary medications. There, there have been a lot of strategies that have been applied, and we appreciate that. And we think transparency is a critical element of that. But we do believe that creation of an Oregon prescription drug affordability board that helps identify those prescription drug products which cause affordability and accessibility challenges are, should be addressed to set upper limits on drugs. And again, we're seeing already some reinforcement in terms of at least lessening the increases with the, 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 the threat of actually using transparent information to, to come up with good strategies. So again, I thank you very much for your leadership on this. And I know that speaking for AARP Oregon, we look forward to working with you and supporting this and other efforts.
Thank you, Jerry, very much. Appreciate your, your leadership and your involvement with our activities as well. And now Charlie, over to you.
All right, can you hear me? It looks like you can. Great. Thank you very much for the opportunity to testify. My name is Charlie Fisher. I'm the State Director of OSPRD. We're a statewide public interest group with thousands of members from around the state. First, just wanted to give kudos to DCBS for this really great report. I think it really highlights, you know, what we know, which is that prescription drugs continue to cost too much for Oregon consumers. Prices are too high for anti inflammatory, cancer medications, antivirals, treatments for behavioral health, even vitamins. And of American adults and seniors who take prescription drugs, one in four reported that it is difficult to afford their medication, while three in ten reported not filling a prescription due to the cost. We actually, over the past couple of years, have been doing a lot of work on prescription drug prices, as you know. And we've, we've talked to our members about this issue. And I wanted to share just some findings from a survey that we, we've done of our members related to prescription drug prices. So we found that out of the, not nine out of the ten respondents who said they found it hard or very hard to afford their medications had delayed treatment because of the cost. So, you know, people who have challenge affording drugs, unsurprisingly, sometimes decide not to take them, even if their doctor prescribes them. And, you know, for those who found it easy or very easy to afford, half of the respondents stated that they either had few prescription needs at all or were able to buy generic brands. But as we know, that choice isn't available for all patients, depending on their health needs, the availability with generic brand, or, you know, the willingness of an insurer to cover an alternative. Beyond affording the cost of the drugs themselves, our members often found it difficult to cover prescriptions through insurance. One respondent noted that her prescription coverage is not available until she meets a high deductible. Another said that his family of three pays about twenty five thousand dollars per year out of pocket, even after insurance covers part of the cost. And these difficulties were experienced across nearly every type of coverage from Medicare, employer based coverage, private plans from Marketplace, OHP. And I just want to close with one story that really particularly stuck out to me. The respondent's family was faced with two prescriptions, neither of which were covered by their insurance and which cost over a thousand dollars each. It was unaffordable, and she had to make the choice for her family to go with over the counter medication in lieu of what the doctor had prescribed and recommended. And, you know, she said she just had to hope for the best. And that's really what it comes down to, being able to afford to listen to your doctor and buy the prescription they think is most medically necessary for your condition. Having to quote, "hope for the best," because you can't afford to follow a doctor's orders, even with the health pants unacceptable. And the high prices lie with the pharmaceutical companies. So again, really appreciate the work that DCBS is doing on this. I would echo Jerry that more needs to be done to actually bring down prices. And, you know, we're very supportive of those efforts in the legislature next year. But just want to say thanks for the opportunity to testify. That's it.
Thank you, Charlie. Thank you for testifying, and thank you for sharing that story. That's exactly why we're doing the work that we're doing. No one should have to choose between taking the medicine their doctor prescribes and anything else. So thank you for that. And thank you again to Jerry. So we're going to move on now to our first panel, which is going to discuss the pricing of COVID-19 therapeutics. We're very glad to have three people with us. The Honorable Tobias Reed, the Oregon State Treasurer, Sarah Edmund, the Executive Vice President and COO of the Institute for Clinical and Economic Review, Iser, and Donna Stewart, a Senior Director of State Policy from Pharma. So let's, let's go in, in that order. So Treasurer Reed, the floor is now yours. Thank you very much for joining us.
Thank you, Director Stolfi. Thanks for the invitation. And I have enjoyed the, the brief conversation that I've been able to listen to this morning. I think I'm here to offer a slightly different perspective as, as an investor. I'm honored to serve as, as State Treasurer in Oregon. And part of that job is as the state's chief investment officer. But I'm also an advocate for sound financial policy across all aspects of Oregon's economy. I don't have to tell any of you about the way that the opioid industry has hurt Oregonians. But that's particularly through the lack of transparency in pricing and lobbying activities and in accounting practices. And throughout my time as treasurer, we've been really active in advocating with opioid companies to address these issues from an investor point of view. In 2018, I was among the co filers of a shareholder proposal at McKesson, one of the distributors of opioids, which advocated for more transparent accounting and the use of generally accepted accounting principles. We are also, as a treasury, a member of a group called Investors for Opioid Accountability, which is a diverse investor group that comprises fifty four members and three and a half trillion dollars in assets under management. That group is engaged with opioid companies on business risks that have implications for stakeholders, communities, and the economy. All of these activities were, of course, related to opioids, but the coronavirus has certainly shined a new light on the issue of transparency in the pharmaceutical industry. And I suspect that part of the reason I was invited to join you today was a letter that I signed in September with a number of other state treasurers addressed to Gilead, pointing out that the price of Gilead's COVID-19 drug, remdesivir, is disconnected from market forces and is not sustainable. It's obviously an issue related equity, but it matters to us as investors as well. And it exists across the pharmaceutical industry. We heard from Jerry Cohen just now, who's an AARP volunteer. That's a nice bit of continuity, because AARP did a really interesting study recently where they looked at two hundred and sixty seven of the most common brand name drugs and calculated that the average price of those drugs increased by more than twice the rate of inflation in every year since 2007. In fact, in 2015, those prices increased by a hundred and fifty times the rate of inflation. And of course, you know, the average price of patented drugs is three point four times higher in the US than it is in Canada. I could easily go through how that impacts Oregonians, how it impacts our investments. But what I want to leave with you is an important set of questions, I think. The fact that drug companies like Gilead are receiving federal funding to find solutions, treatments, cures for this global pandemic is, is a reality. And it is great news that vaccines are on the way. But I'm concerned about the lack of oversight mechanism on the use of these public funds. And that's the question, I think, for policymakers around the country. How are the recipients of these funds addressing the pandemic? When solutions are identified and profits are made, how are those profits reinvested? When they're earned through an infusion of public money? What, what are the, the benefits that the public gets? Ultimately, how does public money impact pricing? We're going to continue to use the tools that are available to us as investors, as shareholders, to address these issues. And of course, hope that all of you, as state level policymakers, use the levers that are available to you and contribute to change in that area as well. In the long term, I think policy has to grapple with this balance that, that will address that, the need for pharmaceutical innovation against the impact that high drug prices have on the consumer and on taxpayer funded programs like Medicare and Medicaid. And it's connected to the returns that we need to generate for, for our beneficiaries. So I look forward to the, the conversation today and in the months and years to come as we continue to pursue equal access to pharmaceuticals as a fundamental tenet of, of basic healthcare. And again, I appreciate the invitation and the chance to be with you today.
Thank you very much, Treasurer Reed. Really, really value your perspective on this. Appreciate both the letter and the message that you sent to Gilead. And you got a kudos in the chat from Jerry for mentioning the AARP study as well. So thank you for doing that. So next, and if you were able. So next, and if you were able to stick around for a couple of minutes, we've got two more folks and we'll have any questions. Thank you, Mr. Treasurer. So next up, we have Sarah Emmend from Iser. Sarah, over to you.
Thank you so much for the opportunity to be with you all today. I'm hoping audio is coming through okay. The question of the year in 2020, can you hear me now? And Cassie, thank you so much for running the slide deck. I have enjoyed the conversation and really welcome the opportunity to anchor some of what Numi and her team have found in their analysis. In sort of what we have found by using an evidence-based approach to looking at pricing. And we'll specifically talk about remdesivir today, the next slide. For those of you who aren't familiar, Iser is an independent, nonpartisan, nonprofit. Often referred to as a health technology assessment group, that's a term that's used internationally. One that might be a little foreign in the US, but we are the major organization in the US doing this work. In order to keep our independence, all of our work on the research side is funded by nonprofit foundations. What makes our work distinctive is we bring this conversation about pricing, access and clinical benefit to a public conversation. All of our reports are available for free on our website for anyone to use. And we have been looking at medical test treatments, delivery system innovations for nearing 13, 14 years now. One other distinctive part is we do not shy away from the question of cost. And so we do cost effectiveness analysis so that we can have some sort of benchmark to know whether or not the price chosen by the manufacturer. Aligns with the clinical benefit that patients receive. And we'll see some examples of that with the remdesivir model in just a minute. We also bring all of our work to a public convening of an independent appraisal committee. In fact, we have three where experts in consumer and public representation methodology. Clinicians, health economists come together in order to make sure that they're keeping us honest with our research, our conclusions, our assumptions. And they take votes on what we have come up with in terms of determining fair price and some recommendations for fair access. Next slide. So let's dive right in. We looked at remdesivir as it was being developed and when it got its first emergency use authorization. Because we saw an opportunity to talk about pharmaceutical pricing in the context of a pandemic. Because it offers us an opportunity to look at things potentially differently than how we normally do. Now, there's a lot of reasons we can get into and why pricing in a pandemic should be different. We can talk about the public health burden that a pandemic represents. We can talk about population health being a social justice issue. There's a number of reasons and I encourage people to look at our pricing in a pandemic paper where we sort of unpack this and there's a link to it at the end of my deck. But what we decided to do was take two approaches to looking at the fairness of the price chosen by Gilead for remdesivir. The first approach is cost recovery. This is often considered a fair way to look at a drug that's generic. I'll sort of admit that upfront, right? So when a drug has gone off patent. Society is supposed to benefit from that social investment. And that means that we're looking at sort of cost of goods sold and maybe just a little bit on the profit margin side. Why we introduced this as a point of discussion for policymakers during this crisis was this is a crisis. Where we have wide reaching implications to being able to reopen to the economy, saving lives. And so there was the opportunity to say, maybe this is one case where we're not benchmarking the price to sort of the maximum benefit that the drug is able to produce. The second approach does just that. Value-based pricing says this this drug should be reimbursed, should cost. As much as it brings in terms of clinical benefit for patients. And you could even add in society. We do do modified societal perspective at times. We decided to do both approaches again to give policymakers a range of prices to think about when they're trying to judge the fairness of the price. Chosen by the manufacturer when they have monopoly pricing power. I'll quickly mention there are other approaches that have been discussed and we held a series of webinar over the summer. Where there were experts saying this is so different that we need things like monetary prizes. And we should think about compulsory licensing and advanced market commitments. And I will say that Operation Warp Speed with its investment in vaccine development is an example of how these alternative mechanisms can work. Right? We bought the Pfizer vaccine before it was even approved. So we gave Pfizer an incentive to continue to invest money in the development because we were going to buy it. Basically, whether or not it worked and we're all so glad it worked. All right, next slide. So on the cost recovery side, what did we find? We looked for information about how much it would cost if you had to write a check to just produce a course of treatment for remdesivir. And there was an independent academic article that said it's about a dollar per day of dose. Dollar per day. And so that benchmarks it really on the low end, five bucks if you're doing a five day course. The other thing we found, and we have done two updates to our report because we kept getting additional information, both for the manufacturer and from other academics. Is that there were three generic manufacturers who started to put out how much it was costing them to do a course of treatment. And that was up to about $600. Okay, so then you ask the question, does the manufacturer deserve to recoup any research and development costs? This can be a very controversial question to ask and how you measure which costs are in and which costs are out is subject to some philosophical divides. What we decided to do, again, giving policymakers all of the information they may need to say on the low end, it's zero. Because this drug already existed. It was literally sitting on a shelf, not just figuratively, as we like to say. Because it was developed as part of a suite of antivirals for other conditions. Now, we hear often from the pharmaceutical industry that we need high prices because drug development is risky and sometimes things fail. And so in our thinking, it wasn't clear to us that Gilead deserved all of the credit for the money it invested in the remdesivir. Trials way back when, because they theoretically recouped that investment through the drugs that were approved and were priced. At a premium. But we heard and talked to many experts and we thought it was very fair to consider how much Gilead was investing in the trials for COVID-19. And according to a call with analysts, it was expected that Gilead was going to invest $1 billion in the clinical trial program for COVID-19 in particular. And so if you amortize that over expected number of doses, then you could add $1,000 per course of treatment in the cost recovery model. So that's where you get a range from about $1,000 to $1,600 as a fair price for remdesivir. Next slide. And then the other way that's really important to think about this is actually the basis of all of Iser's work. We believe there is plenty of room to incentivize innovation by rewarding big wins clinically. When patients benefit big, that's a big price tag. And you use cost effectiveness as a way to measure the the difference between the price chosen by the manufacturer. And that fair price that matches the clinical benefit. We did our analysis based on severity of disease. And have to make certain assumptions about what you're seeing in the clinical trial data. Now, again, we've updated this analysis twice because we kept learning new things about how remdesivir was working. Our most recent update showed that if you're looking at patients who have moderate to severe disease in the hospital. Also getting dexamethasone, which became the standard of treatment based on some information on trial from the World Health Organization. And you assumed no mortality benefit, which was another area of controversy about whether or not remdesivir showed that. Our analysis showed a fair price was $2,470 for a course of treatment. Compared to the average commercial payer price for a course of treatment for this patient population of just under $4,000. I'll quickly note that in mild disease, this should make intuitive sense. If you're tracking how well a drug works from the patient perspective. If the drug doesn't work as well in patients who don't have as severe disease, that dictates a lower price. And in that analysis, we analyzed it to be $70 for a course of treatment. And you'll see here, because mild, patients with milder disease might need less drug. That the average commercial payer price we were able to identify was 2,750 in that patient population. So if you're looking at all of this, given that remdesivir, our understanding is mostly used for the moderate to severe patient population. You're looking at a fair price of about $2,500, which is a 62% discount. Off of the average price that we're seeing in the commercial market for that patient population. And just one final slide, Cassie. So what does this all mean? It means that policymakers have an opportunity to use evidence to inform. Different and new ways to think about pricing pharmaceuticals in a pandemic. So instead of that gut feeling going, wow, that price is too high. It just feels high. When you have an independent analysis of the clinical benefit based. As a way to determine the fair price, you have an ability to say, now I know my gut is saying that. And here's a starting point for a conversation about what what represents fairness in a pandemic. I mentioned that we've updated our report twice. We may do it again if we get more data, given what's changing and how quickly it's changing with COVID-19. It's really important to remember that the answer can change. And we've we've seen that and talked about that with every update and we're not afraid to say that. That's part of the science, that's part of doing this work, is making sure that we're rapidly updating the information to meet. The needs of policymakers and what the evidence is telling us. And when you have an independent analysis that's fully available for anyone to look at. That's talking about scaling the price to the magnitude of the clinical benefit that the manufacturers are able to demonstrate. It offers a counterpoint to just the manufacturer deciding what the price is. And so in times when policymakers are looking for information, knowing that there's an independent analysis, it's transparent, it's rapidly updated. Can make conversations about fairness in terms of pricing and access rooted in evidence. And then Cassie, just so people know, the last slide is linked to certain resources. I encourage people to look at the full updated report. I believe that Numi added it to the website so people can download it there. All the details are there. I just wanted to do high level today, but it's my job as a health policy nerd to make sure you know. There's lots of important details and caveats and things in those reports. And again, we held a series talking about this issue for people who want to explore more of why this is different. And why we should be thinking about pharmaceutical pricing in a pandemic in a different way. Again, Numi and everyone, thank you for the opportunity to be here.
Thank you, Sarah, very much. That was a lot of very interesting information. I think you've found yourself a couple more fans in the in the audience. So we'll move on now to Donna, another floor viewers.
Hello, and as mentioned, my name is Donna Stewart and I'm Senior Director of Policy for Pharma in the Northwest. I'd like to thank you for the invitation to provide comments during this panel. We did find it of of interest. Pharma was only recently contacted to be part of these discussions. And over the past few days, there have been a number of changes to the draft agenda. Given to the short notice and the multiple changes, we were unable to confirm an individual that could speak on this topic specifically. And unfortunately, neither Pharma nor myself are able to represent an individual member company or the drugs they produce. However, we're highly interested in this discussion and the points that were raised. And although I'll not be able to provide specific comment on this topic, do want to thank you for this invitation.
Thank you, Donna. We're getting some feedback there. Just want to make sure that you're done and we're getting some feedbacks of anyone who's not muted, if you could please mute. Okay, so I, we've got a minute or two, we can see if any of the panelists have any question. Or any of the moderators have any questions for the panelists, or if a panelist has a question for another panelist even. And and I could start while while folks think, maybe for for Sarah, you mentioned a couple of different ways in which remdesivir. The cost of that that drug could be set. Can you speak at all to how, or if we know how Gilead actually set the price? And how it wound up being much higher than any of those? And and maybe adding to that, you had some some ways in which the information could possibly be used. You have at least two legislators listening now, are there kind of specific ways in which you could recommend? We can take this data and use it to to some way influence the prices.
Great questions, both. What was interesting was the world was watching when Gilead was coming out with its pricing of remdesivir back in May. And the CEO took the unusual tag of writing sort of an open letter about what went into their decision. It was very typical of some of the things that we we hear from Pharma when they talk about why, you know, they've picked a particular price. The clinical benefit, the investment in research and development. I think what was also interesting in this case was they were they were talking about a potential mortality benefit. They did not show that in a statistically significant way in their trial, but it was very close. One of the point estimates was was really close. And they also talked about shortening hospital stays. And what was really interesting in the very, and so they were saying there's savings here. And what was interesting in the beginning is we actually didn't know anything about whether or not there were shortened hospital stays. We knew people were recovering quicker, but we weren't sure they were leaving the hospital more quickly. And so there weren't necessarily savings. I will say that we do have data now that do show shortened hospital stays. And that's one of the ways that you get to the price that we came up with because you're saving money. The other big distinction here, and this is one I will freely admit, is that Gilead said. Our drug could potentially help reopen the economy, right? So if we have a successful treatment, that means we don't have to be so scared. We can't, we can go about our business. And that would take what's called a societal perspective. That would say that the manufacturer of the drug deserves the social surplus that they create by being able to open the economy. And I will admit, there are a lot of people who believe that is true. That the manufacturer, the innovator of the drug is one who should deserve, who deserves sort of that credit in a price for being able to reopen the economy. And there's a whole bunch of other people that say that's not appropriate in a pandemic. And that there are a lot of things that, a lot of investments that are happening that have for taxpayer dollars. Other other ways that society has sort of sacrificed in order for things to be developed. And so that we deserve as society to benefit from some of that social surplus. So that's a little bit about what we heard from Gilead in terms of how they were pricing. Now, what can we do with this information? So Jennifer Rack is going to be talking later. Jennifer and I are friends. I don't think she's going to be mad. I'm going to say this. She's going to have lots of ideas for you about how you can use some of this information. But I will say, everything from drug affordability boards, where states are considering sort of a rate setting approach. Like a pay up to model and they could use an independent analysis of price like Iser is in order to set that ceiling. We do work on unsupported price increases, which could lend itself to some legislation where you'll know which drugs are having. The the largest price increases without any demonstration of additional clinical benefit. So there's a number of ways that states are tackling this issue. Because honestly, we think that's where all of the action is really going to happen. No one's really expecting it to happen on the federal level. So I hope that addresses your questions.
Thank you, Sarah, very much. Any of the other moderators have any questions for this panel?
Senator Byer, sir, I have a question, you know, how much weight would you put into the argument that without some additional incentive in a pandemic with an unknown? That actually these companies would not choose to make the investment?
Such a great question. One of the ways I think about this, I draw my 10 years in the biopharmaceutical industry, which is that the pharmaceutical scientists I worked with. Didn't work on curing disease to be able to charge high prices later and get lots of return on their stock options. They did it because they're scientists who believe in curing suffering. And so I've made the argument a few times that, you know, these companies, yes, needed incentive. There needed to be a reward in order to divert existing resources in order to do this research and development. But generally, this is an industry made up of people who love a challenge like this. So the idea that no one was going to try to be the one who won with the the successful vaccine. Or they weren't going to try to be the one that that developed the treatment that allowed us to reopen the economy. Doesn't jive with my experience working with pharmaceutical scientists for over a decade. But there is, there is something, you have to have something there in order to, if they are a business, they have to do a return to shareholders. So you have to balance what that incentive is and that motivation is. But the idea that it's supposed to be huge in order to get them to stop looking at some of these other conditions. I I think that's a little bit suspect.
I I think I agree with you completely. I think I agree with you completely in terms of the scientists. I'm not so sure that I would buy that completely in terms of the people, the executives who have to appropriate the money or approve the money. I remember reading early on a discussion from a German scientist. And I think he may have been involved with the company that produced one of the two drugs, saying she got involved early and her team wanted to do it, but it was quite a challenge to convince the executives that this is something they ought to do and that they ought to move resources from other projects to do this.
If I could just quickly add, Senator, the other part is that, you know, depending on which analysis you, one of our, you know, which perspective you take on our analysis, you know, $2,500 for a five day course of treatment with the number of COVID cases that we're seeing, you know, could, should be enough to sort of motivate that investment. And so it's not like we're saying, and again, if you believe in cost recovery, yes, but even in the cost recovery, you know, $1,000, $1,500 for a course of treatment and a lot of eligible patients, we're talking about significant return that should be able to justify that investment. I'm so sorry, Treasure, I did not mean to interrupt.
Not at all. You had something more substantive to say. I was just going to add that I agree with both you and Senator Byer. And I think that's also why it's important for institutional investors to make the case that the long run sustainability and profitability of a company is what's at stake here. And when large investors can urge the executives to keep that in mind and resist the temptation to be short term in their orientation, that could be a powerful one, two combination.
Hundred percent agree.
Thank you all for that. Any other questions from our moderators for this panel before we thank them and set them free?
This is Jeremy, just want to ask more of a comment. Just want to thank you, Sarah, for the great presentation. I think the work that I just doing is really fantastic. And I think that, you know, efforts to try to connect, you know, our ability to purchase as a state or pull policy or mechanisms that help really drive value is aligned with where we've been trying to go as a state generally. And I think to the points you've made and the point Treasure Reed made that, you know, I think there's a plethora of evidence out there that there's a pretty big disconnect between what's happening in a pricing and actually the costs of bringing a product to market. I think there's, I've seen plenty of evidence that those are completely disconnected. And, you know, I think pricing aside, there's also other sort of market behavior that I think we need to think about from a policy perspective. For instance, just the large drive towards developing drugs for very small populations. And there's been a lot of stories recently around, you know, we aren't developing new antibiotics, as an example, things of that nature. And I think that's largely driven by the fact that the pricing mechanism right now sort of incents folks to just pick those things where they can sort of drive the price the highest. And I think that is disconnected from the science or the idea of innovation. It's just sort of a market imbalance. So kudos to all the work you all have done and thanks for the great presentation.
I really appreciate that and look forward to finding further ways to collaborate. I would really look forward to that. So thank you again for having me.
Well, thank you. If there's nothing else, thank you very much again to our panelists, Treasure Reed. Thank you for your involvement, your leadership, Sarah, for all your research and sharing that, Donna for joining us. Thank you all very much. So we're going to move on now to our second panel, which is going to discuss state actions on drug prices. We're being joined by Lauren Rebley, Drug Importation Program Manager for the Colorado Department of Healthcare Policy and Financing's Pharmacy Office, Chris Velisio, Manager, Policy and Special Projects for the Maryland Prescription Drug Affordability Board, and Jennifer Rec from Nash P. So we'll go in that order, Lauren, Chris, Jennifer. So Lauren, the floor is yours.
Thank you, everyone, for having me today. I'm really happy to be here and share our experience with implementing an importation program in Colorado. I did have some slides. I don't see them yet, but oh, here they come. Great. So my name is Lauren Rebley. I'm the Drug Importation Program Manager for the State of Colorado. I've been working on implementing this program full time since March 2020, but I have been involved from the start, so sort of May 2019-ish. And prior to working at Colorado's Department of Healthcare Policy and Financing, I spent about seven years working for the federal government in Washington DC. So we can go on to the next slide, please. So the legislative framework around drug importation is not particularly new. Importation from Canada specifically has been technically allowable in the United States since 2003, when Congress passed legislation to amend the Federal Food Drug and Cosmetic Act to permit the importation of prescription drugs by wholesalers and pharmacies. It wasn't until the last few years, however, that the idea of importation gained true traction at the federal level. And as we know, the Trump administration has made this a core part of their drug pricing strategy. So they embarked on the regulatory pathway to make state-led programs possible. And so in December of 2019, HHS released a notice of proposed rulemaking. And then they subsequently finalized this rule in September, and it has gone into effect as of November 30th. So it very much sets forth a robust framework for states to implement importation programs. We can go on to the next slide. So some features of this final rule. Firstly, the supply chain requirements, they are very robust on sort of the, well, they're very broad, but to simplify it, we would be allowed to have one foreign seller, who we see as a Canadian wholesaler, and one importer, which would be our US wholesaler. And that will maintain a tight and secure supply chain. And the final rule lays out specific guidelines of how these entities would operate together. It also lays out safety and quality standards. And so there's a lot to be said in this area, but the main point is that the importation, the final rule lays the groundwork for an equivalently sophisticated transaction record for all drugs imported under these programs. So these would be compliant with the DQSA, which is the Drug Supply Chain Security Act. So we would be tracking and tracing and following all federal guidelines for ensuring that these drugs are safe and at a quality that is appropriate for the American public. And along those lines as well, all drugs entering the United States through an importation program would be tested and approved by a lab, which would then be reviewed and approved by the FDA before entering a state market. The final rule, in accordance with federal statute, also lays out eligible drugs for importation. So all drugs that would be imported through this program must be approved by Health Canada's Health Products and Food Branch. So that's a federal Canadian body that would approve these drugs. And then the drug also must be the same as an FDA-approved drug in the United States. So we could not import drugs that are different from what we have here. They have to be the same dosage, the same value. And then it also excludes certain drug classes that could be deemed unsafe to import, such as intravenous drugs, infusion drugs, controlled substances such as opioids, biologics such as humira or insulins, drugs that are inhaled for surgery, intra-fecal and intraocular drugs. So none of those particular, excuse me, drug categories could be imported unless there is a federal statute change. And then finally, the final rule lays out application guidelines for how states can pursue a program like this and what is necessary to become approved to operate. So if we go on to the next slide, please. So for a quick overview of what Colorado is thinking in this space, we passed our legislation in May of 2019 to set up a program. Our program will focus on the commercial market. And, you know, we've done some initial studies that has shown that it would have little to no impact on our Medicaid program spend on prescription drugs. And this is due to the impact of the Medicaid rebate program. There may be specific drugs within Medicaid where we would see some savings, but on a whole, we don't see a significant impact for Medicaid. So because of our focus on the commercial market, you know, we seek to work with health plans and PBMs to have imported drugs covered on formularies so that patients can access these drugs at their pharmacy counter for perhaps a reduced co-pay or a cost share, perhaps a $0 co-pay. That's something we're still exploring. And of course, they would be available to all cash paying customers as well, potentially providing a lower cost option for the uninsured or the underinsured in our state. So in our initial study, we looked at a group of 167 high cost and highly utilized drugs in Colorado. And it was 167 drugs. We found an average of 61% savings when importing all of those drugs. This does include a markup for the supply chain of about 45%. And that is an estimation, but it would cover everything from the foreign seller, so up in Canada, crossing the border to the importer to cover testing and relabeling. And then, you know, what a pharmacy would also pay to a wholesaler to purchase those imported products. So we have completely developed our program so far to be in line with the regulatory framework set forth by the FDA. We are currently working on developing our competitive solicitation, which will be an invitation to negotiate, which we hope to release in early 2021 to seek the vendors that will be necessary to run this program. And that will identify all of our supply chain partners. And we can keep interested states abreast of progress there. But we hope that all of this work will culminate in an operational program by 2023. So there's lots of work to be done between, you know, the procurement, the contracts, developing a final application for the federal government and then seeking that approval and receiving it. So the next slide. So this is kind of a simple overview of what importation programs will look like and what Colorado specifically has developed. So it's meant to show, this slide is meant to show how drugs imported through our program would follow a very similar path that drugs entering the US market in the traditional way follow today. So the red map shows the current distribution system, starting with an FDA-approved manufacturer imported into the United States to a US relabeler, repackager, to wholesaler, to a pharmacy, and to the consumer. The blue map shows how we envision working, envision importation working in Colorado's program. And basically, it just adds one step. So rather than a manufacturer sending these drugs directly along their current supply chain, the drugs would first stop with a foreign seller, a Canadian wholesaler in Canada. And then that wholesaler in Canada would sell to a US wholesaler. And per the final rule, the importer would be responsible for coordinating the testing of all drugs and the relabeling process to complete their transition to being eligible for sale in the United States. And then the Colorado consumer could still access them at their local pharmacy. And finally, on the last slide, I think it's important to talk about some considerations and challenges for importation programs. The first thing that I want to note is that we believe in our state that based on the final rule, this program can be successfully operationalized. And we're actively working towards that goal. We would, you know, our main purpose is to bring imported products into our state to present a cheaper option for consumers at the pharmacy counter and relieve that burden. However, there are some considerations and some challenges that we have identified. First, there's a lot of uncertainty at the federal level right now as to whether this will continue to be supported. I think President-elect Biden has signaled general support for importation, but we have not heard yet any specific plans for the programs moving forward. And that is, you know, definitely important to our work because without federal support for importation programs, they cannot succeed. You know, and so we need support for approval of applications, but also in pursuing a diplomatic effort with Canada to swatch some of their concerns. Which brings me to my next point. Canada has signaled their concern over US importation programs and specifically on impacting their national drug supply. And in late November, they did release an interim order, which I think is pretty similar to our sort of federal rulemaking process. But it prohibits the exportation of drugs that are experiencing a Canadian shortage or that if their exportation would create or exacerbate a shortage. In our program in Colorado, we have always taken Canadian shortages into account in our analysis. And we will continue to do so. And so we look forward to working with our potential partners to address those concerns and make sure that we are not impacting Canadian drug supply. But it's certainly something to watch for. And then finally, you know, if you're focusing on a commercial market importation program, health plans and PBM participation is integral to program success in covering these products for Colorado consumers. We have had some success in this space. We've had many robust conversations with health plans and PBMs. And I think the progress specifically, you know, no health plan has outright declined to work with us on this. I think there's general interest and, you know, people are curious. But we have learned a lot about the PBM market through this process. And I think we've identified that smaller and more nimble PBMs may be well placed and very open to participating in a program like this, you know, but they're looking for something more innovative to add to their business. And, you know, we would hope that it could help create downward pressure in the market that would inspire others to participate as well. But that is what I have so far. So I'm happy to answer any questions or, yeah.
Lauren, Representative Rob Knows here. Your program was my bill in 2019, and we backed away from it for a whole host of reasons. And you kind of revealed some of the challenges that we uncovered. So I hope you'll keep in touch with our state and let us know how this works out because you're doing the other 49 states in the United States a real service trying to figure this out and model it for us. Because I think if you're ultimately able to be successful, and of course, you know, it also depends on the goodwill of the Canadians. You know, this could be the thing that finally tips the buckets or the balance, so to speak, and would finally say, okay, the United States is going to do what everybody else and the rest of the world is and get their arms around this. So thank you to the state of Colorado and its legislature and you for doing this because we couldn't figure out how to justify it. And you really did a really good job of revealing what we had heard were some of the challenges.
Well, thank you. I appreciate that and will certainly keep you posted on our progress.
You're governor to send ours the bill, okay? She probably won't like hearing that, but like you really are doing a lot of, your state's really doing a lot of us a good service here, but thank you for sharing this.
Oh, and thank you. I appreciate that.
Yes, thank you, Lauren. And I know we'll have at least one question for you at the end. Let's get through the next two presentations. We'll have more questions at the end, but please stick around. So next up, we have Chris. Over to you.
There we go. Sorry about that, I was muted. Good afternoon, everyone. So first off, it's just great to be participating in such an important event. I'd like to start out by thanking the panel and the OPD team for inviting me to speak for you today. Special thank you to Nume for reaching out. As mentioned, my name is Chris Viasio, and I'm a policy analyst supporting the PDAB. I've been with the board since May. Now, I know everyone has a lot of questions and there's terrific panelists presenting after me, so I'll try to be concise and move quickly through this. So that, the next slide. So the Prescription Drug Affordability Board, or the PDAB, was created in 2019. It's an independent state agency designed to protect the state and its residents from the rising cost of prescription drug products. Over the next year, the board will be studying the prescription drug market in Maryland and weighing possible policy options that we can take. This includes, but isn't limited to, setting upper payment limits, which I think is a topic of interest today. I do want to stress that the first population that we're going to be targeting are state and local government employees and retirees with the potential of expanding to a broader population at a later date. with the potential of expanding to a broader population at a later date. Next slide, please. So the board is comprised of five members from various disciplines, including health policy, public finance, economics, drug pricing, healthcare delivery, pharmacology, I mean, we have it all. And I know some board members are watching today, and I hope they don't mind me saying this, but we are really lucky to have these individuals overseeing this effort. They are just incredible people to work with. The members are selected by our legislative leaders in the state, the governor, as well as the state's attorney general. Next slide, please. So the board currently operates on a budget of about $750,000, which is provided via a loan from the Maryland Healthcare Commission, which is a fellow state agency. We did have a bill that was passed by the legislature this year that would have provided a dedicated funding source for the board, but it was vetoed in May. The bill placed some relatively minimal fees on certain entities in the pharmaceutical supply and payment chain, and it kept the board's budget about $2 million per year. Now, we've heard through public statements that the state legislators are planning an override of that bill during next general session. Regardless, we remain focused on our mission and we are working to fulfill our statutory obligations and get the work done. Now, because of the statewide hiring freeze, we've had to wait to fully hire our staff. Though we did recently select our executive director and we're working with various state agencies to finalize that hire, we are very excited to announce that and get to work and, you know, get a lot of our future projects completed. But until then, we are really fortunate to have the support of MHCC, who has helped augment our staff and provided just critical technical assistance, including human resources support, IT support, and other services, including public outreach, help with the upcoming legislative session. So a huge thank you to that agency. Next slide, please. So the board held its first meetings in January and February of this year. These were in-person events with presentations from our carriers, other state agencies, as well as CRISP, which is our region's health information exchange. They cover both the state of Maryland and DC. They, sorry. But following the outbreak of COVID-19, the board did have to transition to virtual meetings. And we held our meetings in June through November of 2020. Looking forward to 2021, we still plan on holding these virtual meetings until it's safe to meet in person. Our next meeting will be January 25th, 2021. Just a next slide, please. So just some quick takeaways from these meetings. First and foremost, our stakeholders are really eager to help us out. I mentioned Chris before, but we have, we've had carriers express their support for the board. They've offered to share certain data with us. Our sister agencies have also offered critical support as we move forward, including MHCC as well as HS CRC. And that agency is actually administers Maryland's unique all-payer rate-setting system for hospital services. And they've both offered their expertise and guidance. The Maryland Health Benefit Exchange has also been terrific. They've offered us support and guidance as far as we stand up our agency. Critically, we've also received just near-universal and bipartisan support from our local government leaders and much of our legislature too. And this has been true since the inception of our board. As the bipartisan support that we received through our state and local government and our stakeholder community was really critical to our creation and our operation. Next, from our carriers, we've received certain claims and utilization data and it's sort of confirmed our prior assumptions that there are three general areas of cost concerns. The first is expensive novel therapies, and I think we've mentioned before orphan drugs, I think a previous panelist mentioned it. These don't necessarily have huge markets, but they're just, each treatment is quite expensive. The next are drugs with high utilization rates for chronic conditions. And finally, we have drugs that just see unchecked price inflation every year. We've also heard about affordability issues at the local level. One of our county leaders, Harvard County Executive Barry Glassman, he spoke to the board and noted that for his county alone, drug costs experienced an average increase of over 12% over the last year. And it's just creating unsustainable affordability issues across the state. Next slide, please. So the board, in June 2020, the board actually created a select committee of board members to study issues surrounding data collection. Now, this committee is going to identify what data we actually need, where we can obtain this information, and how best to secure it. Possible sources include partnerships with our sister agencies, MOU with our peer states, as well as submissions from carriers and our health information exchange, as well as commercial data sets. Next slide, please. So we were asked today to identify some of the issues that we've experienced over the past year. Now, first and foremost is complications arise from COVID-19. It is difficult to stand up an agency under ideal conditions. So it has taken a significant effort to get the PDAB up and running this year. Now, this has impacted our ability to secure office space, which we need to secure our data, hire full staff, coordinate across state agencies, interact with the public. I mean, and it even played a role in the veto of our funding bill. The second big issue, though, is related to data and obtaining information that reveals the true cost of prescription drugs to mailers. And it's not just getting, you know, accurate information, but getting current information. It doesn't help us getting data that's more than a year old. Excuse me. But the decisions the board makes are going to be based on support by the data we collect. And for a variety of reasons, much of the data regarding pricing and utilization is protected and really difficult to ascertain. But some solutions. Many of these issues are a result of operational budgetary issues created by the pandemic. So as workers are able to safely return, we can expect operation to begin to resemble some sort of normalcy, but it may take many months to achieve that. Federal assistance will also likely be necessary to address state budgetary concerns, hiring freeze, things like that. However, the board is really fortunate to have strong support throughout the state to achieve its goals. Also, a dedicated funding source would have avoided many of the issues we experienced, and we're hopeful to get that sorted out over the coming months. Regarding access to data, though, the board has the benefit of having the support of the region's health information exchange, major state insurers, sister agencies, especially HS CRC and MHCC, bipartisan support across legislators and local government leaders. And we also benefit by our state's just really robust data collection and its APCD, the All-Pairs Plan Database, to receive very current and very detailed data on utilization. The General Assembly in our Enabling Statute has also empowered the board to utilize a wide variety of options to gain access to needed data, and we continue to study that. Finally, the board has also been approached by firms eager to provide analytic and other data services. And we've begun to engage with peer states in anticipation, excuse me, of entering into critical MOUs to share data related to pricing and utilization. With that, I could be happy to take some questions, or if you would like to move on to the next panelists, I'd be happy to take questions later.
Thanks, Chris. Really appreciate this. It's very interesting what you're standing up. And again, looks like a model for us to look to, to hear and across the nation. So yes, let's move on first over to Jennifer. And we are terribly behind time, so anything you could do to get through quickly would be very much appreciated. Jennifer?
Absolutely. Thank you, Director Sophie. I will give you the speed version because I still know there are more public comments to be made. Thank you so much for the invitation to be here today. I will just jump in as my slides are getting pulled up. If you could skip to the second slide, please. One back. Jennifer Rec, I'm the project director at Nashbe Center for Drug Pricing, where we've been putting out models for states to address drug pricing since 2017. And we've also been convening states that are implementing legislation that they've enacted specifically around drug price transparency. Oregon has been a wonderful member of that group of states that we've pulled together. And we've also worked with states implementing importation and have had the pleasure of working with Lauren. Next slide, please. I just wanted to give you, after hearing those excellent presentations on specific initiatives in Colorado and Maryland, I'm going to scope us back out a little bit and give you a sense of overall legislative activity in states around drug pricing over the last four years, since Nashbe has been tracking this as part of our work. For these major categories of legislation, you can see, I think the big story is just that it's been a very particularly active space for legislation. We've seen almost every state enacting laws over the past four years. The biggest category being legislation around regulating pharmacy benefit managers. We expect to see more of that in the coming session, especially building off the recent Supreme Court ruling that came out last week that has enabled states to effectively regulate PBMs. We also expect to see more states moving on transparency and importation and affordability reviews. Another big area I want to mention that we saw a lot of activity in 2020, despite it being an extraordinary year, and we expect to see more action in 2021, is around capping the out-of-pocket expenses for insulin. A typical bill does that, I'd say, normally at a rate of $100 a month. And I don't think that this is the solution for drug pricing because it doesn't address the prices themselves. However, I think that it can be valuable stopgap measures to bring some consumer relief. And we expect to see more of that in 2021. If you could jump to the next slide, please. So in the coming legislative session, we also expect to see some new bills introduced related to some new models that Nashbe put out earlier this year. These new models were designed with the input of legal experts to be able to withstand legal challenges. And also were designed to build on and use existing resources, such as a report that ICER puts out that I will tell you more about in just a moment. So first up is a new model that Nashbe has out around international reference rates. And this model would essentially achieve the same end goal of a Drug Affordability Review Board in terms of setting rates for prescription drugs within a state, but would do it by looking to Canadian prices. Specifically, this model would develop a list of the 250 most costly drugs in a state, essentially looking at spending by the state employee health plan as an adequate proxy to develop that list. And then would look at Canadian prices in the four most populous provinces for those drugs and develop reference rates based on the Canadian prices. Very importantly, the savings would be passed on to consumers. The language that we included in the model leaves this up to a state to determine the best way to do this, but did make the point that those savings that are accrued by a model like this should be passed to consumers. And an important legal point is that, again, this is just setting rates within a state as opposed to setting prices, which would not stand a patent challenge. Next slide, please. So this just gives you a sense of some of the price differentials, similar to what Lauren mentioned, comparing US and Canadian prices for importation. The examples that we pulled here actually show a slightly larger differential of the Canadian prices being, on average, 73% cheaper. I think that is in part because of the inclusion of biologics. So that's just one thing that I wanted to highlight here. You know, as Lauren mentioned, the federal regulations around importation precludes biologics. But a rate-setting approach, of course, would not be subject to that and could include biologics. So some states that are looking into importation are also considering this model as a way to address biologics, since those are outside of the scope of importation at the moment. And some states that are looking into establishing affordability boards are also looking at Canadian pricing as a potential resource for the boards to look to. Next slide, please. So this next slide builds off of some of ICER's work. Thank you to my fellow panelist Sarah for teeing that up very nicely. This model builds off of a specific report that ICER puts out annually that is looking not at drug prices themselves, but specifically looking at price increases and unsupported price increases defined as a price increase that is not justified by new clinical data regarding safety or efficacy. This is essentially a tax model that uses the state's tax authority to assess penalties on manufacturers that are identified in this report that ICER puts out for having an unsupported drug price increase. And the penalty would be 80% of the manufacturer's excess revenue looking, the excess revenues from the part of the price increase that was unsupported and in addition to inflation. So there is an allowance for inflation, but there is a penalty for an unsupported price increase beyond that. And again, this model act specifies that the revenues that are generated by a model like this, which could be quite considerable, given the drugs that are identified by ICER, this model act specifies that those revenues be passed on to consumers to help offset prescription drug cost. If we can go to the next slide, please. This is a slide that shows the drugs that were identified in ICER's 2019 report on unsupported price increases. And that, the column at the far right is looking at the impact of the net price increases. So, you know, again, not the overall price, but just the net price increase. And for these drugs across the nation, it adds up to, I believe, 4.5 billion. And next slide, please. Oh, sorry. One more point I wanted to make about the ICER model is that in assessing drugs for potentially having an unsupported price increase, ICER has a very rigorous methodology set up in terms of how they identify drugs. But they also accept nominations from states. And we worked with the transparency states last year, looking at some of the drugs that were identified as being very high-cost drugs and drugs with very high price increases across states. And we're able to nominate a number of drugs for ICER's consideration for review for their 2020 report, which I believe is coming out in January. And the drugs that states put forward because of drugs that were identified through their transparency laws were primarily arthritis and diabetes medications. And some of the big drugs that were highlighted initially in this hearing today, including Humira and Embro and Stellara. Next slide, please. Really quickly, because I know we're tight on time, I will just touch on two additional models. Nashbe also has a price gouging 2.0 model, which attempts to address some of the legal issues that led to Maryland's price gouging bill being struck down. And so that's out there as a resource as well. And we also have a new model to license sales reps and require some continuing professional education as part of that. Certain reports in terms of the extent of their marketing and contact with providers. And building off a law we saw pass last year in Colorado also requires disclosure of the cost of the drugs being marketed as well as the availability of any relevant generics. And excuse me for spading through that, but I hope that helped. And excuse me for speeding through that, but I, I hope that helped get things back on track. And I'm happy to answer any questions, either now or, or later. I've, I've put my email in my slides as well.
Thank you, Jennifer, very much for that information. And if, if folks have questions, they could maybe submit it through the Q and A or send an email. We're, we're unfortunately a little bit behind. I'll point out that there was a question to Lauren about some experience with setting up that program, which has been answered in the Q and A. So folks can see that there. So thank you to the three panels very much for joining us. So we're going to move on and I'm going to mix the, the order up a bit to, to wrap us up. One of the main goals of this program is to receive public input. So we're going to make sure that we have time for that. We've got one last individual who asked to speak, and that's John Mullin. So, John, the floor is yours. If you could keep your, your comments as briefly as you can, and then we'll move back to our final panel. John, the floor is yours.
Great. Thank you. Can you hear me? Thank you. Can you hear me?
Yes, we can. Go ahead.
Okay, sorry. Senator Byer, Representative Knowles, and Director Stolfi, for the record, John Mullin. I'm the Board President of the Oregon Coalition for Affordable Prescriptions. Our board's made up of consumer advocates, healthcare plans, and labor representation. But we also have a broad coalition that includes a number of statewide organizations and community-based organizations. I, I was struck a number of years ago reading a quote by an AARP consumer that basically said, "Prescription drugs don't work if you can't afford to take them." That statement's simple, direct, and very powerful. And it goes along with the principle upon which OCAP was formed. We had a single goal in mind, lowering drug prices for Oregonians. And we were concerned that the federal government was doing a limited amount of work in this area. So we felt we needed to focus on state action. We also support transparency, and we supported House Bill 4005 in 2018. It had been active in every legislative session since. In 2021, our legislative agenda includes the creation of a prescription drug affordability board. We believe transparency is not enough. And now more than ever, prescription drugs are needed to be more affordable on behalf of consumers and also for those entities that purchase drugs on behalf of consumers. So we think that the, with the costs being as high as they are, we need to have more appropriate mechanisms in place, such as upper payment limits through this prescription drug affordability board. But we look forward to continuing to engage in this issue. And again, I want to thank the host of this meeting, and particularly to thank DCBS for putting together a very interesting and informative presentation today. Thank you for the opportunity to testify.
Thank you, John, very much for joining us. Appreciate it. So with that, we'll, we'll go and ask Stephanie Kennon, Swift McGuire Woods Consulting, will give the briefest overview of federal policy environment and drug policies, prices that she's probably ever given. So Stephanie, over to you.
Thank you. And I have some slides that I think should be coming up. I hope. Thank you, Ken. In order to understand what really is going on in DC, I need to say two things. We are in this odd period of time where we are transitioning to a new administration. The Trump administration has dropped two very significant regulations that I'm going to run over and then talk about a little bit of what's, kind of what's already here. Next slide, please. So on Friday, November 20th, the Trump administration released two regulations. And both of them have some issues with them. The first is the Most Favored Nation rule. It was, it deals with Part B drugs, Medicare Part B drugs, which are largely injectables. Cancer drugs are an example. And it requires the providers to, to engage in negotiations with manufacturers. It will, it's a mandatory program across the country. And the reason it's important to note this is because the advanced notice of rulemaking said that it would be a test and probably only affect 50% of the country. The final rule also goes much farther than what was portrayed in the advanced notice of rulemaking, in that it now goes to the lowest price adjusted per capita gross domestic product of any OECD country with a GDP that is at least 60% of, of the US. Essentially, what this rule is trying to do is import price controls and other tools that are used by other countries by doing this. The other important part of the rule that's just important to take note is that it acknowledges that 19% of the Part B drug utilization may be eliminated because patients simply can't access the drugs from their, their providers. Next slide, please. This rule has a number of procedural issues. It was released first as an advanced notice of proposed rulemaking, which is not a notice of proposed rulemaking. I know that sounds like people getting hung up on process, but the process is important. There was a notice of, of rulemaking that was submitted to the Office of Management and Budget. It was never cleared. That has led some people to say that in essence, they didn't follow the, the appropriate process. CMS is saying that because of the pandemic, there's an excuse to bypass the usual rulemaking process. And Pharma is now suing to stop the implementation of this. And also several, a couple of cancer groups have filed suit this week as well. There's some implementation issues, largely that CMS may not be able to obtain the data, the data that they really, they really need to do this. It may lower Medicare Advantage payments, even though Medicare Advantage is not part of the pool that will be, that will be impacted by this, which means they're not necessarily benefiting from the lower drug prices and their, their price, their payments from the federal government would go down. And Medicare Advantage has now become quite popular. Next slide, please. The drug rebate rule came out on the same night as the Most Favored Nation rule. And it changes some anti-kickback regulations to create two narrow safe harbors to provide discounts for the consumer at the pharmacy counter to protect arrangements between manufacturers, and that should be PBMs, that are fixed fee services. This is usually related to government contracts. The final rule removed Medicaid managed care organizations because of the number of common, commoners who noted that the projected result of the, of their inclusion would be to increase Medicaid costs for states and the federal government. CMS agreed, so they dropped them out. Next slide, please. The issue with the drug rebate rule was that the Secretary Azar was required to confirm that the drug rebate rule will not increase federal, federal spending. He did not provide any justification for that confirmation. HHS is operating under the theory that manufacturers will simply lower their prices. The other issue is a procedural issue was, was this withdrawn? The drug rebate rule, when it was first released, was very controversial. It was not popular on Capitol Hill. It was questionable about whether this would really help beneficiaries. And CMS made the statement that they were withdrawing the proposed rule. However, they did not publish something in the Federal Register saying they were withdrawing it, but they had this very long press release saying they were withdrawing it. So that is part of the basis of a Pharma suit that has been filed, of saying, they said they were withdrawing it. And if you withdraw a rule, you have to go back and start again, which they did not. They just suddenly popped out this rule. Next slide, please. I'm just going to mention this very briefly. In October 2020, there was a large health, health transparency regulation largely directed at hospitals. It does include a requirement that plans and insurers must disclose the negotiated rate of, of the drugs. This, again, is related to hospital services. But it does not require them to disclose discounts, rebates, or price concessions for the drugs. This hasn't really been challenged, although the hospitals continue to try to challenge the overall rule. But I just wanted to put that out there. You go all very far ahead of where the federal government is, though. Next slide, please. Drug importation. We can skip this slide and go to the next one, because we've already had a very thorough explanation. Back one, one more. I'll just raise a couple of issues with importation. As mentioned, Canada announced that they will take measures to protect their drug supply. Pharma and two other organizations are challenging this final rule, saying that they disregarded the key protections in the Food, Drug, and Cosmetic Act. Part of the basis of that suit is also that, again, the secretary had to confirm that importing drugs is safe. Azar did not provide any real justification for saying it was safe, other than his years of experience with the industry. The other issue is that HHS can't really quantify the savings. And the industry is saying, if you're doing this because you think you're going to save money, then you have to show us that you're going to be saving money. I will also add that I think drug importation is here to stay, regardless of, of administration change. It's been one of those hotly debated issues for a very long time. It's just not going to go away. Next slide, please. Biden administration are not particular fans of the Most Favored Nation rule or the drug rebate rule. They can pretty much do a couple of things. One is that any rule that's published within the 60-day window before the administration takes place, usually administrations come in and they do some kind of hold or, and allow for review. Sometimes it's, they're holding it until there's Senate confirmed agency heads, or sometimes they hold it just for a specific period of time. The problem with the Most Favored Nation rule is that it does go into effect on January 1, and providers have, are scrambling to figure out how to implement it by January 1. They would be greatly relieved if it were held, and they didn't have to do that right away. And because of the procedural issues, that could be easily challenged in court and be struck. The drug rebate rule, again, doesn't have a lot of friends. And there are a number of studies that show that it really isn't going to save money. So there's some concern that the Biden administration might just allow that to sort of meander in through the court system. It is more, its procedural issues are more complex. And as I said, drug importation is not likely to go away. The next secretary, however, may not certify that there is not a risk to safety and health that would slow things down again. And I will say, the Biden administration has said that they want to look at the prices that drugs are introduced into the market at, and they want to look at how to slow the price increases. This is a priority for the administration, but given the COVID-19 pandemic, I think that a lot of energy is going to go into, to working for that first, before they begin to work on, on drug pricing. And Congress, I've been doing this for 25 years. I've watched a lot of Congresses try to deal with drug prices, and they nibble around the edges, but they never really go to the heart of the issues. That's just been the nature of the way Congress has addressed these things. This coming Congress will be even more difficult to do anything on drug prices because the Democratic and Republican margins are so much more narrow. And we don't yet know who will control the Senate. So I think that looking to Congress to act, as much as I know there are some members who really do want to act and, and truly want to work with both sides and get something done, it's going to be very hard. As I think Senator Wyden and Senator Grassley can tell you, they had a bipartisan bill. They got it out of the Senate Finance Committee, then, but it was very clear that some things had to be worked on. Grassley continued to work on it to get Republican sponsors, and nobody would co-sponsor his bill. So it's a hard job for Congress, and I will end there.
Thank you so very much, Stephanie, for that information. Well, certainly, we'll have some interesting time ahead of us. So before we do a really quick wrap-up, we'll hear again from Donna Stewart from Pharma, who's promised to keep this to a minute or less. Thank you, Donna.
Yes, and thank you. We also appreciate this invitation to provide comment on the panel. As previously discussed, due to the timing and the short notice, we are unable to fully participate. This was a really good discussion, but my colleagues that focus on federal issues who would be able to provide the best information are, are working through multiple demands at this time. As you can imagine, as we're approaching a new and incoming administration and our continued efforts to fight the pandemic, which highlighted by states receiving those first doses of the COVID vaccine just two days ago, we're just really overcommitted at this time. We're very proud of the progress our scientists and the industry has made to this point. We have 1,741 clinical trials currently taking place that are studying the COVID-19 treatments and vaccines. And as of December 11th, 24 of those clinical trials are taking place there in Oregon. Our efforts to help fight the pandemic include, as has been stated before, this spectacular and timely FDA authorizations for antivirals and therapeutic antibodies. In addition to the new vaccine, we will be providing the department with some additional resources on, not only on the COVID-19, some of those focusing on the mRNA vaccine technology, the emergency authorization approval process, vaccine lifecycle information, as well as some other information, especially on our clinical trial diversity principles. We do look forward to future discussions with you on all of these. Again, we, this, this is a timing issue, and although we were unable to provide some specific comment at this time, we just want you to know that if you have any follow-up questions after the discussion, that we'd be happy to get back with you on those, on those questions. And with that, thank you again.
Thank you, Donna, very much. So to close out, I'll, I'll ask if my co-moderators have any final thoughts they'd like to share. Senator, Representative Jeremy.
Jeremy, nothing to add. Thanks again for the invite. Great, great hearing and presentation. And, you know, kudos for you guys, all the hard work getting this off the ground. It's great.
Very good presentations, lots of information, lots of stuff to chew on and things to look. It's very interesting to see what other states are doing, and particularly Colorado. And I'd like to follow up on some of the things, I think it was Jennifer Rec, put out there from that association, is potential policy issues.
Well, with that, let me give a, a final thank to, thanks to all of you for participating. A very big thank you to Newme and Antonio and the rest of the staff for the amazing work they do, gathering this information and making this all take place today. Remind you that the slides that were part of the presentation today, as well as our annual report, are available on our website. And thank you to my co-moderators, Senator Byer, Representative Knowles, and Jeremy. Thank you so much for joining us, and we look forward to seeing you all again next year. Thank you.